Call this meeting to order. When do we just?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. Let's call Greg.
Level floor.
Any conflicts of interest today, sorry, questions or comments about the agenda? Your agenda is approved as reading of the minutes.
June third, twenty twenty five, the board supervisors met at nine o'clock AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair Presiding. Members present were Dozart, Mulbauer, Hayden and Rosberg, member absent Schultz. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved the change of wage for Ashley Igers and Monica Newman at Public Health. The board approved the resignation of Ryan Topoff. Charter Oak Township Trustee, the board approved the appointment of Carla Darrell, Charter Oak Township Trustee. A motion was made by Rosberg seconded by Hayden to approve position descriptions for Assistant to the Engineer, Administrative Operations Assistant to Engineer, Field Operations and Heavy Equipment Operator Crane Operator. Motion was passed unanimously. She was made by Dozart, seconded by Rosberg to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty six wages for secondary road, Administrative Assistance both passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty six wages for secondary roads, Targeting unit employees, motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at ten o'clock AM. Agenda for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday at four thirty preceding the next meeting.
Any gorgeous meeting we ever?
Yeah, yeah, a long time.
Mentioned that Kyle was gone.
Been short of the evidence inside.
And corrections or comments? And so approved as. Supervisory reports, Scott.
Well, not much. I turned off the ball regardless.
Very nice. Nice to see how many other engineers, I mean, there's some who throw quite weight ago.
Yeah, like in college.
You had the one you were talking to, Todd.
Yep.
Good to see Wade Lice.
Yep.
Uncle Tom.
Yeah, it's good to see a lot of. Calhoun and Burns Associates.
I wonder.
It was good to see Ben was making contacts with those people as well, or have contacts with them, so feel like we're. We're a good spot, good transition.
Martin Marietta guy, he told me this, anytime you want to come back up and do the tour again, we like having you guys.
Yeah, you're out there. Out there. For work?
Down to the caves.
I was, I answered that, but talking to Bart, Senator Bart, they got to go on a slot.
They took a lot of trips, time, I mean, they were Arkansas, they were all over.
Yeah, they really did, and that was a nice lesson we had also, but.
What the heck if they go Arkansas or Lucky Motor, they're getting thrilled or something. No, you're mostly all retired.
No, I called Paul Monday because we were. My wife and I had planned to go visit our youngest son at Stanford, our newest grandson at Big Disney. So we were going to Florida, went up Friday, get back on Sunday, and I called Paul Monday and just said, hey, what are you doing first day of retirement? Oh, my God, in the morning, he's like, well, I've been out since six o'clock. Got my sprayer, I've been spraying terraces and fence lines and so he's nonstop. Doing his part, and he said, doing what I love to do now. But we had a nice talk.
Thank you, didn't love this.
Yeah, he loved it, he loved this too, he said it was a great fit.
Flat turnout, really nice.
Okay, I saw a picture of it.
Yep.
Actually, a lot of them joking about it.
There's a lot of difference in his attitude, day one to day last. He was always, let's go home. Maybe that short timer's attitude, you never detected that really with him, of course, he's last few weeks, he hurt last few months, he was on vacation.
We were joking with Paul, don't twist your back on your last day here lifting that heavy thing.
His best guy, loved amazing. Never hesitate, need any, never hesitate to call the office.
Well, he told me, we talked to. Yeah, Dave and I did last week. I mean, we budgeted forty-five thousand dollars for consultation fees, spend coming here if we need it to, it's in the budget. But, and I think I told Jenna, said, hey, it's not a pride thing to go the whole year and say, ah, I never used any of that money, I did it all on my own. That, I mean, we've got a great asset, Paul, and if we need to utilize it, like Paul told me when I talked to him on Monday, he said, hey, phone call. Yeah, I'm not gonna charge if Ben's got a question about something, but if he wants me to handle the project, then that's what's up. Come into play, but.
We have that flexibility.
I just, right, we have that flexibility, I mean, we've been, the county's been really fortunate. Hopefully, like you talked to John about, is that you've learned some stuff, and when you learn from the best. Lovely, use that, utilize that.
That was the other thing I noticed too, a lot of the other engineers were often saying olive branch for him to reach out to the asset of pickle that. They're just phone call away as well, so. Paul gave them that option when they were young engineers, so, right.
They have a tight knit group and.
They've got. They've got a working relationship amongst them all.
And he goes, shows us with his turnout of other engineers, how highly respected Paul was across the state.
Not surprising. I didn't have anything either, we've got a IT meeting tomorrow, so we'll see where that goes as far as direction is concerned. But that's all I got.
Got back from a lot of the department heads on how things were going, didn't read all those comments, but they were.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could discuss it now, but I mean, Terry reached out to every department head, just ask how things are going with Cory. How we've been, you know, for the last few months of Cory's company at the Hill versus Bushford with their own IT director, but their thoughts and feelings about that, that's one of the things.
Seemed to be a hundred percent positive.
Yep, still positive.
Very, very positive.
Yep, it's been a good experience having Cory. Yes.
I mean, he's not the typical vendor out of a department or all that. You call and then you try to fix things over, I mean, he's local, he's right here, it's kind of to be a hybrid between a vendor and a full-time guy.
I mean, I think that's the apprehension of some of the department heads is that they were here when ISAC gave their report and part of the report was, we don't recommend that. Yeah, I think it goes to your point as far as maybe they haven't seen it on such a local level where they've seen it more in the larger metropolises. Maybe it hasn't worked as well there as has here, and I think the biggest thing here, we talked to Cory about it, is a favor of that, is just do some planning, put together a, you know, two, three, four, five year plan. Uh, moving forward for the courthouse, and we're keeping wanting to do that, so without a doubt.
Yep, which would be good for budgeting, so we know if there's some bigger projects coming up, we can start a budget for it.
Because I think ISAC expressed that that's what they saw. Why it didn't work to hire someone out is because they didn't have that planning capability. Cory said he'd be willing to do that, so.
Is it on an agenda for IT to talk about, you know, one time we're gonna do. You know, this entry or card entry?
Yep.
Yep, yes.
As I'm looking through these comments from department heads.
That's one of the responses.
Cory and his team have been fantastic to work with, just kind of some of the first comments. I'm not, Chris Gosh hasn't had a chance to use him, but he's heard nothing but good experiences, I'm not gonna make mention names. Other people that don't use him currently that could possibly, I've heard many positive comments about Cory and his staff. Thankfully, we've had minimal issues, Cory and his team are great, have been able to take care of the issues. We love Cory and his team. Cory's been responsive and prompt, I love Cory and his crew, I mean, this is just kind of, I would keep using Cory, everything is fine with me.
Yeah, that's, it's basically solid, I mean, if it's, it's only it's golf.
You know, one of the.
I mean, we got the big projects going on right now, getting the city center up and running, but otherwise. There's been Johnny on the spot even when we're having trouble delivering a meeting, we got people running it, so.
When I think down the road, it sounds like we're listening to Colin or.
Yep, those are some of the ones I was reading.
Get off, she missed, they both, Terry reached out to both of them also, both respond that they would be, we'll have to look at.
Nice game.
Well, there's multiple personnel. Agencies or out to handle. Those, especially the Sheriff's Department, midnight calls or whatever, yeah.
That's that.
Their twenty-four seven operation, they got IT issues.
Yeah, you know, I think from Tori's perspective, I think he would like to see a long-term commitment, therefore that's the route we're gonna go from us, so he can. Make some decisions for his company, you know.
And his.
Which makes sense.
Right, exactly.
Get a better deal if it was like a long term.
Perhaps, yeah.
One of the department heads said they love him, very good to work to work with, my only concern aside having IT announced would be some of the extras we've started working on, I'd hate to see those projects come to a halt. Uh, examples, Killa's entry, uh, if he has the staff to keep up with our needs, I'd love to see him considered as well, I'm good with whatever the group feels, but I have no issues since Cory took over.
I think if he did it long-term, he'd make sure that staff personally.
Exactly.
You might have somebody here three days a week, him house or whatever, what he'd come up with.
We don't need how, I mean, they're pretty much every day. So.
So you guys keep breaking stuff, so they're good.
You know, I was trying to find an email of Kim Finer on Friday. She laid out exactly how everybody's gonna get moved over, who's over there now, nearly making some great progress. Gonna be completely moved in and all kind of depends on IT and when they can get the tenant things moved over. Uh, right now, they're kind of using dual, just like Cory said it would work, but they're very anxious to get everybody over there now that they've got about three quarters of their staff over. Um, I just got a call from Molly with DHS, they're using the, they're gonna have a actual meeting of all of their staff down there this week sometime. She called because she couldn't get in, her pops said they have them up working, so at least it's gonna go let them in, I'll talk to Cory about that, but they've used that several times, so they're very happy with the space that they have. So get that rent kind of figured out how much space is dedicated just to them, that kind of determines how much they'll pay for rent, so. We're getting those numbers painted together, I'll call Cory, and I'm sure the minute that he finds out those don't work, he can probably push a button and make them work, I'm not sure what's going on, but. I told her that that building is available from eight-thirty to four-thirty, it should be open, you know, they should pack in if she doesn't work, it should be open, you know, today, but at least just have them run over here and lock the door, so. Gonna have to maybe figure out how to make sure it is open.
Issue the external door or just for?
The external door. We have, we did change one of the cameras around to where it actually is going to be looking at the conference room, so we can see when somebody's in there, you know. Feel like that's gonna be being used a lot, there was a camera that Cory had found that wasn't being used, so he decided to just put it up there on the corner, you know, just in case something would happen in that room that we'd have a camera in there, so.
Did you change cross stairs?
We got that looked at.
Yes, yeah. It was ordered, you know, they went out of order, I haven't heard anything back from the NS sales.
And then, let's see, two days ago, Kim called me that the stuff that round the wall wasn't done in one of the offices, and I called one and he sent a guy up there right away. And as long as he was there, uh, Kim had noticed that there were some of the ceiling tiles not in the break room, and then so one. Said he'd get his guys working on that, and so that has been, one has been great to work with, because you call him, and he, he actually said, oh, I forgot to, to do that, he said, I'll send somebody up right away. And so we're getting all those little tiny details that maybe got overlooked, like we thought we would have them, so, yeah. They're, they're working over there now, I'm gonna step over after this meeting and see how things are looking.
So are they moving on Friday?
They're going to, let's see, I was trying to find, I think it's next Friday that they're actually gonna pitch us for permission from the Board of Health. To close next Friday to get the other office cleaned up and, you know, once you're out, you kind of wanna go back, give everybody a chance to get their spaces, so. But probably July first will be the big grand opening for it, it's kind of not July first.
So once, once they get moved up, the AMX that's we currently have, do we want to, are they, I'm sure all those cubicles that are downstairs are gonna stay here, just don't need.
That's my understanding.
Do we want to? I guess haul it down to the sale barn and some would easier to have people interested, they saw how big that basement is without all these.
Well.
Pools in there.
I think that would be a question for the real estate agent that has currently got two different people that are kind of looking at it. And so, you know, Jim Brown would have maybe a better feel on that if he would like them gone. I don't see any problem with even storing them in the other buildings, in case that large space we ever want to make it into cubicles, because. At one point in time, you know, we had talked about having, you know, would do their things down there, if on one day a month, we could set that up to where there was cubicles to have, kind of like you'd go out to the hospital and do your. Their, it's a big room normally, but then when you go out there, they have a cube, could just keep them for future use for, because they probably wouldn't hit much for them, but. I would recommend just take, move the bulk of it in the building store and have whatever my cubicle out there, a paper space. And I'll talk to Jim and see what he thinks about that, I'll talk to Kim, see if she ever sees any future use for it, but I don't know if it would be much, it'd show better without them, I, I know, but it's gonna show better because. There's two gals in one office, and that really made it look small, but I think once you get all the stuff out of there, they're, they're all sized off. Excited about that, that's good news, but otherwise, I'll be gone next Tuesday, I'll still be down the lake, so carry on.
God, you don't like how jumping real quick.
Please, go ahead.
Ah, I did have an ECI State Board meeting last week, it was a pretty long one, it was three hour meeting. There's a lot of angst among the ECI areas, of course, formula changed, like how funding is gonna be put out there, which voted no on. As it was population, it changed population based on land size, which hurts our rural areas, actually got less. What did pass last week, we discussed, we tool O, tool G. Some of those things are more to do with, it's not the funding itself, it's how we collect the data and analyze services provided. And part of that also is private public partnerships, business investment programs. They're looking at trying to capture more federal dollars, through more data collection and same ODB services. Then tool G, one thing I changed with that, it wasn't five percent admin. It's been, are they allowed five percent for admin under Iowa code, for one year, we're gonna look at changing if they're changed to fifteen percent, because if you look at like our ECI area. Five percent of this very small budget just to pay for a director.
That's.
So that was an issue there that we had to address.
Was concerned about having to, hard time.
Right, and then being able to provide everything, being part-time, could never get done, never again. One of the angst among it is they're still looking at, which I don't agree with this, voiced my concern, but. Moving the ECI areas, seven districts here in behavioral health. And we're still hearing the same thing from Kelly Garcia about, oh, you'll have local input, well, if it's just an advisory, well, we all know how that would be behavioral health, it doesn't work. But they're wanting to change now, even though the legislature did pass the bill to change it, but there's, it's gonna come down the road, so they want to get ahead of it. So, well, I, I might talk to Amanda Winslow, City Director, just, I don't agree with that, because you're taking our local input control out of. But they're trying to, maybe by having bigger districts share services, I'm duplicating the angst, but. We, like I said, I keep coming back to behavioral health, we all know how that went, it's still.
It's still not.
Still not.
July first was that deadline, and it's still. On July first, who do we call?
So, there's some changes coming. Have to work through a lot of it's.
We gotta blow that for a while.
Being dictated, you know, coming down the pipe, just like behavioral health was, and just a lot of people are very worrisome. So I guess to be continued. That's all I had.
All for saving money and finding more efficient ways, but efficient ways have to work.
Well, like for us, I mean, look at some of our most efficient programs with behavioral health are stepping stones. Now, that's a local deal that we're able to do it very efficiently local and have a huge impact, but yeah.
It's not a core, so we don't even know its existence after, like, what you said.
And one of the things that they don't think is a core of service is stepping stones, which I found out that stepping stones was able to take probably four of the job corps students that checked the boxes for. What stepping stones actually does, so that was absolutely fabulous to get some kids that are a little bit more at risk than, you know, that they could get that leg up by stepping stones for a little bit, they got help, but their next steps needs something. What we'd do without them.
So Dave, is this a law of legislation to move?
No, it doesn't.
Districts, I mean, they could just do that.
We can, and we, we're looking at going towards that, they're gonna get some more, put some more facts together, kind of sifts the things out, but. No, we can do that, and we have had some ECI area justifying, like in Southern Tier counties, just because we didn't have the funding to really run it on their own.
Does it seem efficient to have one person running all these places and not really being familiar with any of the surroundings? I just, doesn't seem efficient to me.
Well, and then even with behavioral, I know they're two different agencies altogether, you said, it's not the same behavioral health, but yet. When you see them mirroring, trying to mirror each other, try to do it, you know, like behavioral health, all the regions were supposed to. Get ready to RFP, cover that district, combine, do that, and then you see Iowa Primary Care, awesome, boom, there, they get it. And that caught everybody off guard.
They caught everybody off guard because they had Dawn, you know, spent weeks getting all of her down there, they highly encouraged her to do it. Gave them a ray of hope that this was gonna stay, and then, no, it just was so long.
It just, it just looks very, very similar with this guy now.
And how do you mirror a project that hasn't been proven that works? Why would you wanna use that as your example of how this should work when this isn't exactly working, we haven't had any data to prove that it works? And I still worry about how these how, how it works, survive, if it continues, right? Have no reason to not be worried.
Well, I had a quiet week, well, I wasn't quiet, was quiet anyway, but I went out, went down to the Pork Expo. Sat in on some trade meetings and stuff like that, you know, obviously that affects everybody in the county here, what we're doing with grain trade or particular pork trade, we seem to about. Client share worry about that, uh, you know, like they did just recently, they signed some stuff with Vietnamese to trade more pork with them and other things as well. So, I mean, I, I think. Interested to read the tariff thing that I just recently received, but, uh, I think that. If these tariffs work the way I'm being told it's gonna work, it should open up our, our ag market significantly. Now, it's just, and it isn't always tariffs, it's, there's other forms of entrance fees to get into these countries that hold us back or increase the cost of our product exponentially. Europe was big on protectionism because of trying to protect their farmers, you know, they can't operate. You know, Spain's got some pretty decent sized farming areas, but most of them are smaller farm type centers. High small utility tractor is probably a big tractor over in a lot of farms, but it's fair, you know, but. I think if you, if we get, start getting that opened up, I mean, I think our product, our products. I think superior to a lot of them out there, you know, whether it's our grains or our, obviously our beef and pork. Chicken, we can produce the heck out of it when it's not sick, but the. That's, there was, there were some interesting meetings, I mean, where they're working on stuff.
A lot of people, pretty packed.
Yeah, it was, you know, I didn't notice as many, I didn't know, there was a few Asian companies, countries represented. Not as many South American countries as I've noticed in the past, you know, the Brazils and Argentina, I mean, there were some there, but not as many, usually there's a lot, you know. Uh, but there was a lot of people, you know, and, and everybody seemed upbeat for the most part, you know, I'm. So I don't know, I, I mean, if it was, the expo really went overwhelming, I mean, there was good meetings, and then I had a couple, you know, side meetings and stuff that are transportation issues and what have you, to take care of. National and Iowa Pork, so, I mean, it went, it went pretty good, I thought. Then yesterday I had my leadership for the ag company, ACO, and we went over some things, and obviously I'm still kind of pressing on the energy and commerce issues with. What's going on with that, I don't know, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of noise up in Washington about that right now, that permitting process. Owen was gonna dig a little deeper this, I think probably the rest of this week, you can show, that's our staffer for tag and Arnie's, you know, real action. And he's very sharp, Joe are both real sharp, so I think that he'll probably do some digging on that this week, the way it sounded. See where that's at, if that's something that's a concern at county level, obviously a state level, but I mean. We, we got to discuss them quite a bit on, on a lot of the things that the federal government, you know, can kind of quietly. Commandeer some of your, you know, home rule type things, you know, and so that, that was a concern to, to the staffers, so they're gonna dig into that some of that, I agree. Now that the Midwest Conference is over, but now we're focusing on the annual conference, but I'll just, I keep pushing, okay, whatever you wanna say.
Are you grilling for that again?
For.
Or is that state fair?
That's state fair, yeah, oh, the expo, I could just go down and participate, social network. Didn't spend as much time in the Smithfield tend to think they do, I mean, I'm just kind of busy everywhere, talking to people. You know, trade's a fascination to me, so I relate wherever they're talking at, or some of the legal stuff, I didn't run into Eldon this week. But, yeah, it was a good meeting, talked to Secretary Nag for a little bit. And not any major consequence, but talked about what they trades, I asked him, like I told you when I was at that Summit USA, I spoke to that. Our Department of Commerce representative for India, you know, and I asked him, I said, are we pushing hard on India as far as our strength is, and then, oh, I think the McDonald's people, they're, they had a trailer set up there, giving breakfast away in the morning, and. The one people, that's what they do, is they're, they're the promotions people, and I told them I wanted to thank them for all the promotions they're doing in India, because when I was talking to a trade rep from over there, whether we had, you know. If you don't have a palate for eating something, you may not pick it up. But I asked, I had asked him that day, I said, well, who, I said, how do we, I mean, like, there's three hundred million Christians in India, well, they're gonna eat pork, you know, but if they don't have the palate for it. I said, so I asked him, I said, how do we improve that? He said, oh, don't worry about it, McDonald's is taking care of it for you, so I told him, thank you, you're working for, for the industry, you know, but, but. Anyway, I thought that was pretty neat, you know, how we go hand in hand with our American industry. Anyway, that, that, I thought that was pretty neat, you know, how we go hand in hand with our American industries to help out our ag products across the world.
Do they talk about any, uh, market projections or outlook of where they think things are going?
You know, I, I think because of the uncertainty of the tariffs, it was like nobody was really willing, very willing to commit to anything that what they thought. Large trade, you know, they were talking about the imbalances of trade, and I get that corrected, but. You know, I think that, uh, like the UK, everybody was positive about that, that we got a deal. I'm worried about the Japan one, 'cause everybody, remember when we first started talking about tariffs, it was like they were gonna be one of the first ones we made a deal with. And now that's like, it's supposed to have a direction, wait, I'm a little bit nervous about that one, because we moved a lot of beef there. You know, a fair amount anyway, and pork's a big staple in their diet, you know, and. So, anyway, I was just kinda concerned about some of those things, we discussed it a little bit, nobody really had any insight. Think we're going, because they don't. So, they weren't really willing to commit, nobody wants to be wrong. Anyway, uh, then we talked about some of the stuff, legislation, municipal bonds preservation, you know, on, on big beautiful bill. Love that name, that's Sarka, okay, uh, major events, uh. There were stuff that's coming up that we could prepare to, to, you know, prepare for, and then, you know, like. Food products and stuff like that, you know, like the World Cup and all the kind, we talked a little bit about that stuff, the secure real rural school. Rural schools reauthorization, you understand what that really is, the biggest part of that is rural schools, especially out west. Where a lot of your county is consumed by federal land, they don't have any tax money, so they need to protect their schools, so that's basically what that is. So, it's important, obviously.
You're talking, when you get into like the national park areas.
Uh, conservation funding, you know, we're pushing on that, make sure that that stays in there. And that doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like we're getting a lot of pushback on ag things, it sounds like they're, they're, they understand what that's, why that's needed. Uh, the Medicaid provisions, they were talking about that a little bit. There was something about for, to the hospitals for the delayed paybacks and stuff like that, try to correct some of those things.
That's a challenge.
Yeah.
We just had a hospital board meeting last week and just. The denials, kind of slow payback, Medicaid, the MCOs.
Yeah.
And then like one thing we watched, you know, because we're at the county hospital banning, we don't set that thing. You know, we get a DPP payment from Medicaid from the federal.
Yep.
Side, that's three million dollars.
Yeah.
Little banning, it's just three million dollars off the top of it.
That's no, that's noticeable.
DPP is the direct payment program. It's, it's kinda, I shake my head at it, and maybe I'm not seeing it, right, but. The DPP is basically set up to help paraphrase and subsidize. The shortfalls for what we get paid back from MCOs. Still makes sense.
That's, I, I think that's kinda how I understand it too, I mean, I, I'm not into it as much as you would be on the hospital part, but. When I'm listening to them talk about it, sometimes it just goes.
No, we're glad to have it because it keeps our revenue up there to operate, but it's like, well, who wouldn't just get paid?
It all comes out of the same bucket, right? And the MCO is giving their money from Medicaid. And they're passing on to the provider. And you're getting the direct payment, direct from federal government. That is coming from Medicaid or, yeah, so it comes from the same bucket, to sometimes you're just. See why I shake your head, I'd shake my head, just, if you don't.
But the MCO is our private, you know, private company, so they're, they're, they're in it to make money, so they want, any more they can deny or the more they get.
I mean.
Not have pay claims.
The MCO. The cream rises to the top, and that's where they're stupid.
I mean, we all, sure that you guys watch the press, I mean, we had a meeting last Wednesday in Des Moines. And what made the headlines was the county, the county thing, uh, but. We've asked a lot of questions, and I mean, one of them was, is the MCO thing really work? And what they saying?
What, what was Trump barking about with the prescription drugs?
It's a challenge.
The middleman, remember when he was getting, carrying on about being able to cut drugs, prescription drug costs, just getting rid of these middlemen? Paying them, right, I mean, everybody's gotta take their fair share, I mean, the truck and we look at with brokers. They, they keep, sometimes they keep more money on a load than we get. A little bit they're saying that, but I mean, percentage wise, for what they have invested versus what we do in the load, they're, they're making, they're making bank.
I think that's, that's a good point, Ty, it's what's fair, and also when the middleman, I, I can see it in certain, it's like we talked about last week. That instead of having to hire somebody internally and pay all the benefits and do all that, that in instances. It's better off going to something privatized for that, but it's gotten out of control where that privatized company takes lion's share of a cut. Leaves us with less services.
And it makes you wonder, like, when you were watching the Doge up there, Elon's Doge. You know, where they were finding all these monies that were going to different places to MCO type things, you know? And so mu, so little of that money was getting to where it was quote unquote supposed to be going. And I think that's what you find in everything, is people start to master making profit over making service. And the government's main business in America is servicing the boats, not making profits, but you still gotta watch the bottom line. It's a hard thing, that's why, that's why they need great people like the Doge, people we have.
You know, just from an administrative standpoint, we know that we have to, right, if people wanna come up and renew their license, we have to have someone here.
Yeah.
That can process that information and process the paperwork and do all that for you. And so, that's what it gets down to, as the governments get so large, and then the administration gets so large, see. That's when the debate comes, it is, can we hire an outside firm to come in and do this better than we can?
Initially.
Sometimes that way. I think, right, initially, I think sometimes we. Then once. Get fault for, you know, we don't get credit for maybe as well as we're doing these, I mean, that's something I've tried to. Well, when we discussed with the Doge, when they asked me from a county government perspective, is that we are trying to be, uh. Bare bones as we can, and yet provide the best service that we can to the people that are paying the bills for the whole county. And that's what we try to do, and if county supervisors aren't doing that, then they should be going. But I mean, it seems like every one of this board, that's our objective, and we try to get that done through the budgeting process, through reviews, through, you know. Whatever we instill, the department heads instill that in their employees, and, you know, it's just, um, I think. Private sector companies go through the same issue, and, uh, it's just something that you have to be on top of and work on all the time. And I think that's why, you know, the governor wanted to do the, the Doge thing, 'cause she's like, hey, this hasn't been done since the nineteen late seventies. That we've really looked at how can we do things better, even though it should be something that every department head. Every elected official should be focused on doing this every single day, they don't, but, so.
What we talked about last week, it was, you know, if, if the government tipped it all over, and we have, you know. All the government benefits that are, you know, diversing, the extra things that go into that whole budget, that a lot of people don't think about. See, if you look just at what that wage is, you should realize what those benefits cost the county. And I don't see how that's gonna be more efficient to the state with state employees with all that it takes to. And then not be hands on locally, I, it, it just, there's not an easy.
I think it still goes down, you know, I think you're hitting all over it, it still goes down to local governance is the best governance. You know, it's just a matter of how regulated we are on what we have, where we get our funding from.
How we get dictated.
Yeah, how, I mean, all of our mandates that get thrown at us, and then how many times home rule gets interrupted. You know, I mean, you know, we still look after our folks best, 'cause, you know, we're not in a city, city far, far away, you know? And. Yeah, 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 we danger do that, but, uh, and I think that that's part of the problem, is it starts to move away. And then the behemoth, so, I mean, look at Washington, I mean, come on, that's, if, if you could pick her up, pick out a, a boogeyman sized monster. That'd be it, it's huge, I mean, look at how many, when you, when they start talking about cutting people, and then it's only talk like it's fifty percent of their workforce in the department. And it's tens of thousands, I mean, oh my god.
You have people that don't even have to go to work and get a paycheck and are upset when people say you need to work. There's a problem there.
Protest.
There, so it's a problem there, that you've got so used to just doing what you want, that you're angry, that somebody expects you to come to work. I've never had to go to work before, why do I have to go to work now?
Anyway, these, these next four things will probably be on our, heavily on our agenda at the, up there at the annual conferences. Uh. And, and I'm not real sure what this FA, FMAP penalty for coverage of undocumented immigrants, I'm not, not sure what that is. So, I'm gonna have to dig it.
What was that again?
FMAP penalty. I'm not even real sure what that was, 'cause when I, when I, when I would get on the meeting, they were just getting done talking about that. And, uh, I was coming out of the hospital down there to be, I just wasn't, I missed the first part of me, but. Anyway, changes, uh, to the supplemental nutrition program, this is something we're concerned about, 'cause they're talking about local cost sharing. In what form?
From the count, from the counts?
So, as you could tell, that got everybody in the county, so we're, that. That, we know now, next, next week, well, there was supposed to be a little bit more update on that. We will also more at this next Monday, sir, but that, that one there, above all the rest, other ones, I mean.
That was in our. Uh, Naco paperback came out. I read that article.
Yep, so we're, we're, we're concerned about that, so we'll be, uh, be obviously very involved in that discussion. Our, our staffer. And snap, it comes under Ag, so it's our, our committee. Uh, AI regulation freezes, um. Who, it, it must be in the big cities, 'cause I don't see where regulations and AI are affecting what we're doing. I mean, maybe Corey could give us an update or something on, something like that, but must be in the bigger cities. 'Cause they were talking about how that's affecting their ability to respond to rapidly evolving, evolving technologies. Anyway, uh, changes to the Medicaid work requirements and cost sharing for local governments, once again, cost share. Uh, it gets our attention, or that word gets thrown out, basically, that we're unfunded mandate, so now we're not just getting it from Des Moines. We might be getting it from Washington to help offset their big beautiful bill. Uh, I might, if this kind of stuff persists, I might really start to contest the name of that, 'cause there's nothing beautiful about it. If we're funded.
I don't know how you put beautiful in the same sentence as big and bill.
And taxing.
Right.
Yeah, nothing beautiful about any of them.
No.
Anyway, uh, I mean, and I'm just being, well, but I don't, that's, I'm okay with whatever they wanna call, that's their, uh. Uh. Then, uh, probably by the end of the month, I'll find out what my new assignments are. Vice chair stuff again, and, and they talked about, put my, they said to put my name in for at large on the board, there's. A whole country of people to deal with, and a lot of things in big counties gobble that up, so hopefully I can get a real voice on that, we'll see. Uh. And that's pretty much it, I got myself down as a delegate to vote for the new president, but, you know, our new, new, new vice, you know, vice presidents. Second, uh, second. They get staged as you come in there, it's like second vice, then there's the vice, and then once you go to that, then you become the president next year. Uh, the guy that's going out is very, he's very, uh, he's from the valley, California. Uh, but he's from the ag side of it, so I mean, he's a lot more sensible than, and when you see their city representatives out there. Uh, proactive on ag stuff, you know, I mean, he, I think he's been done a pretty good job this last year. You don't get to see them that much out here, 'cause they're, all the stuff they're doing, it's like national, you know, I mean, I hear what they're doing, but. You don't get to watch the data and stuff. The new guy is, uh, JD. He's from Texas, really good guy, I think he'll do a good job too. I wanted to get like in that second vice, I went last year, I don't know if he'll run again this year, but it was a guy from Montana, he's a rancher. Boy, boy, I'd be neat to see what somebody from Art, neck of the woods, you know, and I mean, when I say that, rural, real rural. What that'd be like, I mean, what kind of privacy that could exercise, you know, and then obviously some of the things that. You get hear him talk about federal lands and all that stuff, that might take a bigger, bigger role with somebody like him, but I, I think this JD from Texas will be a lot, a lot. I hope too, hopefully, anyway. Naco's working hard to keep an eye on those things, you know, that might end up costing us money, and I will say that they're, uh. Talking to our legislators, they're, they're listening a little bit more to what Naco's got to say, so it's, that's good to hear. We're, we're regaining the voice, I think for a while there, when I first got on that, that didn't sound like they had a lot of love for Naco. But it seems like they're speaking highly of us now, you know? Good. Anyway, that was the only two things that I really had going. Expo, which really is, but it's still about what we do here. Yes, I think that the, that little hot summer nights went pretty good for Dennis. That was a.
You seen me dressed up in a picture?
Yeah, you seen me dressed up, well, I couldn't think of what I could do, just a. Yeah, when I, you know, when I went to Vegas, back when I was eleven years ago. I bought a goofy Mad Hatter hat, and it has orange hair on it, it's big. And I thought I'd do something to draw attention, 'cause I heard I was up against some pretty stiff competition around Olson. And, uh, Joey, she's a, she's, she's a good bartender. But, uh, she just, she, she got the most money.
Did she?
Yeah.
I tried you, yeah.
Well, I appreciated it too, you know, we, we did good, started off pretty good, but even though the mockway took all of our good beer grand guys to charter up. Went to Slusway, but that's, uh, so the, uh, but Brad, really, I mean, I thought, wow, that was for a small little. One night get thing, I mean, that was a really good, good showing.
It was good, it was.
And everybody stayed late, and it was a good party. Come on, I'm just jabbering now.
Good job, Brad.
He just, this prompted.
No, you can just talk, excellent.
First Monday, I think, Al.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Well, yes, first Monday, right?
Tuesday, yeah.
Well, there's not a whole lot exciting going on. Starting off this week without just. So, uh, yeah, it felt like a normal Monday in every other respect, I guess, so.
But are you moving in, with his location or?
Working on, I'm trying to get computer stuff, uh, carry that computer setup, but, and something I would need a little bit over the weekend, I can't move. But just, just to do it when I, be uninterrupted, but. Uh, but yeah, it's a little bit of adjustment to walk in and, uh, sit. Sit down, uh, I don't sit here anymore. I come from the old spot. That's all, just a Joe's hand in charge, I think. For sure. Well, again, we just have a couple of, uh, utility. Permits, you know, and just some, uh, want to board underground, uh, under PS, you just used to don a re-broke there. Uh, the other ones, uh, uh, trajectory line, uh, along where we just graded up there on J Avenue on the east end. That, uh, down the dead end dirt road there, where just service two a well. So, uh, believe all this, like I said, make, it's always just made you aware of any kind of, uh, utility permit installations, uh. Of course, anything transporting liquid or. So, that makes you aware of any, any permits in that respects, I'll continue to say.
Uh, certain, over on, uh, Bill Bridge, they are working on, uh, sawing piling on the north end of the bridge there. Um, above my piling, I, I don't believe they've, they've gotten a pier piling driven yet, I haven't been over there yet, uh, to the air.
Roll it once a week, or?
I try to make it over there a couple days, a couple days. Casey is, uh, the, uh, the guy that's on site every day, uh, making sure that, uh, things are rolling smoothly and, uh, gotta be tight eyes over there when I, I'm not able to be, so, but, uh, I do try to make it over there a couple times a week to see how things are going. And, uh.
So probably a month out. But how long, just need to anticipate for it to be done?
So, sixty days, yeah.
Uh, let's see, they are eighteen days, uh, last, uh, what do you do for, out of the hundred twenty to a hundred twenty nine, okay.
I'm fingers crossed hoping that they are, that finish before harvest.
Were they, uh, I know, this, first time they've worked in the county, is it this town? Uh, first time, uh, they, you know, since Paul has been engineer, I don't think he's ever worked. Yeah, I don't think, I don't recall those, don't either, but so far, they've been, you had to work with. I've spoken with the shopping guy engineer, they've done a lot of work in, in that, that direction they do, they said they've always done excellent work. So, I think they're a very reputable company by, by all, by all standards, uh. Everything I've seen, uh, along today, uh, professional, they've got a good crew going on, uh.
I think they'll straight.
They will be. They're standing there well, they go in straight, uh, what happened, um, bridge up north there, uh, all, all transpired after the filing, but in, like, all the guards should have, should have remained that way. But, uh, so it got, it was an anomaly, I think. Yeah, and, uh, I moved, and quite a lot of what they're, or that guy, I mean, at that point, when you know they went in straight, uh, that's something that's just, you think you would ever check to make sure they stay straight, you know, but, uh, but yes, the filing are going. But, uh, but yeah, and that's, that's their activities right now, the drum file. Uh, the other project, uh, Yeltsom Park, uh, uh, still mid, mid-July, uh, July fourteenth is the anticipated start date on that. Just keep, keep there, on there as a reminder, but, and then, uh. Great crew, there's, they're up there on three thirty street, yeah, just finishing up up there by this week, uh, by Kenny Drieses. And then, uh, they're gonna move down to Bo Avenue where we've done grading in the past, uh, uh, David Dress's, uh, yes, must have some property along there, he's. That dirt road, uh, possibly, yeah, what can be done with that, but, uh, we are gonna do a little bit shaving up just with, what, within the ride away. Yeah, and, uh, and, uh, like I said, he, it, it was discussed with him, but, you know, what the cost would be to upgrade that roadway, and, uh, and I don't know if that's something that's of interest to him, but how we, you know, to place the cost of landowners to pay for the initial rock to upgrade a roadway.
Like last week did.
Right, exactly, and, uh.
But more than just him or landowners, well, that's a problem.
Yeah, I believe.
Or in on both sides, there's be more paint involved in this one.
I mean, it would have to be a, uh, resolution, a petition to, I believe you'd have a petition to upgrade the roadway. To, to upgrade the roadway, it's a, it's no objection to it, but, uh, I don't believe that's, it would be a problem that, uh, if, you know, it's possible, uh, we do have a down on N Avenue, between seven twenty, one thirty, one thirty, yes. Uh, that, uh, he, the gentleman out there is interested in upgrading the roadway, and, uh, we will provide him an estimate of what it would cost to do a mile segment of roadway, but there again, it would, uh, still have to improve, but reservation, but, and, uh, to upgrade them. That's if he, he's a choose, he's just, uh, or it's a great fortune, uh, upfront costs of, uh, the initial lot to. And on that stretch, I don't think it'd be a bad idea, uh, there's an additional quarter mile to the east that goes into, I'm not sure, they've created if we used to do it all of it, it'd be, uh, went through stretching on Evan Avenue all the way down to the counties. Something considering. I did have an opportunity to talk to him a little bit over the weekend. Rough estimate, he was against it. Okay, I said you could get the official estimate. Yeah, yep, we do have some numbers put together, we just have to get together with him, and, uh, it, it, like I said, it's approximately twenty-five thousand uh, uh, running mile, uh, the, to, for the, the rock itself, uh, which I think, uh. Right, well, some, some, uh, sometimes we do explain some gravel as well, but, uh, and, uh, yeah.
Seems like, or did we have gravel, gravel underneath the white rock we put on there?
It followed on top of that actually, or did you?
Yeah, I think he did come back and someone top, yeah. Last time, when I drove at that time.
Everybody did the same, over there, Steve Strance, uh, yeah, Steve Strance on about a hundred and eighty, uh, you know, short stretch up to the. Same thing, uh, the combination, mostly, uh, white rock and some gravel, so, maybe something, something. Otherwise, uh, bridge crew, they're, they're working up on A Avenue, uh, at Larchamper, CP puller, uh, replacing a couple uh, twin pipes that, uh, yeah, a lot that have pressed down on. And, uh, and then they're gonna move down at, uh, E sixteen, there's a slough off on the north side there, approximately a hundred and eighty at the E sixteen. Uh, yeah, it's been a couple days, uh, that, that, fix that slough off, or get close to the edge of the road, yeah. And, uh, and then from there, they're just gonna keep working on, uh, uh, cords, and try and get some of that out of the yard there. But we've had them sit down there for, for some time now, they're scheduled to go in and, uh, just, we're concentrating on bridges and trying to get some of the cords, uh, put in too. Uh, roadside crew, uh, they're, they're kind of done with the CD for the year. Uh, they might dump a little bit up on that J Avenue to get that finished up, uh, and, uh, they're gonna be out, they're just continue to be out spraying, you know, for pitches and, uh, with the.
Sprayer they got.
Shop down there, see if they're making, yeah, a sprayer.
They're out spraying over there, yes, sir.
With the, with the old, uh. Yeah, they, they, they do have one spring job, yeah, out there going, uh, hopefully, yeah, the other one up and going. Till, till the end of July. So, but, uh, it, it'd be, uh, later in the season, uh, it's, uh, it's too bad that, uh, it didn't work out to where we had that. You know, the spray truck we got is just evil. Andy and, uh, Jack and all kinds of things, so. For Deans, besides.
Yeah, I got a little bit of a careful about that.
Uh, we got the ISU, uh, 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 test section that we'll be doing next week on, uh, Delwood Boulevard, uh, once it's open the seventeenth, I think they want to get started today early, just in case they run longer than, uh, it taking the day, that way we're not, uh, if it does take longer than the day, that way, uh, we're not doing it at the same time as well, we're doing that regular summit, cause that Jeremy Ashlock that's heading the study will be speaking at the, servicing, uh, summit on, uh, on that website, so. Hopefully Monday is when we'll be doing, uh, the work out there on. And, uh, and yes, the regular summit on the eighteenth, uh. I, I believe one of the speakers is, was unable to attend, may, uh, do a recorded, uh, video forest to be able to, uh, put up there, maybe possibly, uh, uh, in turn, to be able to be there to answer questions and, uh, present the, uh, uh, the presentation that it might do a pre-recorded presentation, so.
And that's at, uh.
I was into a round at the last grand service summit, I, I think it's a pretty, uh, just open discussion, uh, at least, I hope it's an open discussion forum, uh, to be able to, yeah, with the county, and just kind of see what kind of challenges they face, you know. Uh, we've sent out a questionnaire to the other counties, and, you know, how much gravel you do, what, what resources, uh, you know, you do your own gravel, all the things of that nature, and, uh, we haven't had a whole lot of replies back to kind of summarize it and, uh, uh, information, but, uh, hopefully we'll get some replies back, but, uh, hopefully it's, uh, just a very informal, you know, discussion, uh, discussing the challenges that everybody faces with, uh, with, uh, the ability to gravel, uh, getting it all rooted, uh, kind of what their programs are, and to get some good ideas to ourselves.
Uh, I do a quick, Paul's truck, so where's that at, kind of, does it need serviced out? We talked about having a week commission use it when Paul retired.
Yes, uh, Alan, uh, you just stopped in yesterday, I guess it was him, they kept, did, what, some areas to us, but, uh, that Paul's truck, uh, actually Sean, his, uh, driving right now, his, his vehicles out, they're looking into it, so he's driving it for a few days. Uh, I, I mentioned to Alan that, uh, by the week should be able to, or get out shop there.
So you're in contact with Alan then about when it's ready?
I, I said I'd shoot it, actually, even at, uh, when, uh, when Sean, you know, it's not like he was a concern to him, but, okay, uh, at the end of the week, but if he needs it, make sure you, you know, make sure to, so, otherwise it would just.
Yeah, that'd be a car pickup. We were kind of intending to use it for the board and then use it for a week mission.
Or else just sit down in the yard there, uh.
No, he has to drive here, pick it up.
It's gonna be a multi-purpose, you know, like they'll use it for election stuff. I don't know, for pulling their trailer.
Guess what we're saying, I love, it's not gonna be. But it's not gonna be able to be just, for you guys, it's just a tank everywhere.
It's gotta be going through the chair here to who's got it. Sure, sure, that way it don't get beat up, cause we want it to last like.
So we have them drop keys off with Ben every night, every use of it?
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
They just drop it off at your office? Then I can just come in here, it's a week mission or us, or you guys just stop down and we're gonna use it for the day for this?
Yep, yep. Uh, Jack, they usually keep a spare set of keys down the shop if they need to, go grab it for any reason, I mean, I sit up or, or, or what have you, but, uh, uh, make sure, it's a, it's a, understood that it's not for just every day, if you need us to pick up, you know. That it's a. Gonna change the, change the number to it.
Does it need service separate ties or anything?
I guess I can't say that, I, we'll make sure that someone's changed, you know, I don't, super laser sinks. Yeah, two oh one, put two oh one in some of the numbers, and we used to have a car, they made two oh one. It was one your dad donated.
Uh, the other thing before we get into your contract, uh, brought up, we have a job description for Kathy, and it does say full-time in there. I don't know if you have that, is that, you got that? Were you reading through?
Right, I mean, the last paragraph, I just said that it's a full-time position, I know Kathy is part-time, I think, I said that it pays overtime, and I guess at what points does Kathy get paid overtime, if she's a part-time? Does that happen at thirty-two hours, and does she have to work to forty, and then over forty, she would get paid overtime, or how does it work for her? You know, I guess I'd have to kind of look at the nature of the contract, I didn't have a, a chance to really.
Maybe we should have been that.
Per se, uh, I, I guess I'm not sure how Paul had that set up with her in that regard, but she's always, uh, I said, it has, has a Wednesday's office, so I, I guess I was assuming it, uh, at thirty-two hours, I had, I, actually, I thought it was a part-time.
I did too, and I thought we should have been that, you know, if in fact.
We just need to clarify for people.
At my knowledge, I guess I have to see where, you know, like. I don't know if she hardly ever is working overtime, I guess, I, I, it is, I'd have to, gosh, take a look at her pay, the schedule, her, her industry.
Responsibilities, maybe joint budget season or something she may, but I think going into it, we should have that clarified, so there's no misunderstanding.
Sure do that, yep. Yep, and, uh, hopefully, I'm sure Paul has it scott, but, uh, I'll, uh, I'll look at the language in it, and, uh, make sure that, like I said, it was my understanding that she's a regular part-time, uh, uh, as far as overtime hours, uh.
Right, I think the job description itself is not Kathy specific, I think it's for that position. So that's why I think that's kind of general there, that it's a full-time position, but that's not specifically how Kathy, so I think it needs to be changed, like Gene says. She's specifically fit what that employee is doing, and then when we hire someone different down the road, whenever that happens, then I guess we should ask them, do we want to keep it a part-time position, or a full-time position?
Might just have a better, just make sure that's a sort of crutch on the books.
Okay, yeah, sure will.
Going in, it's always important to make sure that they know.
Extremely important.
Extremely important, that's how misunderstanding.
But, uh, get your copy, well, if I make a copy.
I guess we're gonna, being with, we're gonna remember that, if we want to wait on it. I guess we're excited, we're.
Maybe we want to just dispose of that, and have them bring a new one next week, or? Yeah, approve that, have them bring it back.
Well, it is, we approved it last week, so.
Okay.
So you really just need to come back and look into it, come back so it's.
Just resign it.
I would just go on it again with the, you know, I said. So it will correct it, correct and clarifies what she is, and if that, she's full-time, but she's not, or if she does go full-time, how would we work it out?
That might actually have been a football ball, and, uh, got clarified how, how he had her, uh, acted, but, I'll, I'll have it figured out.
That, that's, and then, uh, you know, we can get into the next agenda item, your county contract. Gene just entered, stepped out to unlock doors for Molly for a meeting of CC, took a seat. Push it back.
Got it, okay. Cory's, uh, was just happy to be there, and is getting it set up, so.
All right, so last week, Craig and I met with Ben. It kind of, we went over, uh, contract very similar to what Paul had. You know, we looked at some variables, we had a good discussion and finalized a few things, you did send out your final part to Craig and I.
Yes, uh, uh, just, finish what you had, first, uh, yeah, the, the final version, I think, yeah.
Do you have a copy for everybody, or?
Yeah, just go over something outright, said in it.
Well, for the most part, uh, I, I, I did, I took the format of Paul, a lot of the language is the same, the, the, the majority of the contract, uh, yeah.
It was basically the last contract that Paul signed, twenty eighteen, maybe, or, I'd say it was twenty eighteen, I'm gonna say, uh, with, uh.
Like I said, I'll never remember doing on several.
I think one of the things in Paul's contract that a lot of people might not have understood is that because of the fact that you might have to go in when there's snow at two o'clock in the morning, that there's cop time, if that's still, if something.
That's still, and then we discussed.
Yeah.
A time for time.
Time for time.
I will, I understand that it's our decision, but, uh, I will keep track of my time, you know. I will, I understand the situation, but I will keep track of my time, you know, just, just a horn. But it's self-credible, and uh.
This week's question, why we even have it, because you're salary exempt, but then like Ben made the point, why Paul did it was. He kept track of it, he never banked cop time, but if I came in on a Saturday and worked ten hours, I just need that following week, I take off a day. Eight hours, whatever, to just always make it even.
That makes sense, because it's an unpredictable job when you have a stuff store event.
It is, it is still, we can track like that with drugs.
Take a look at this, see.
I just thought of this, because we've got a situation with a couple deputies that, and I'm not trying to pick on you, it's a unique situation. Living outside of the county. They are the ones that do live outside of the county, and I'm not sure. How is he worked that with, when they take a county vehicle home that they. Do some sort of a mileage exchange, and I'm not, I know you're you're like. So far, you're like, you're like what, quarter mile out of the county?
Like Dan and them, are they about just right there if you had to done that, you know, they're not very far either.
No, no.
But like some of, there might be one or two.
We have, is there anything like that, because I just, I know, don't do anything when they're screaming.
Maybe that's the current, currently the deputies that live outside of the county. They stay mileage from the county line to their.
He's a guy got county vehicle, I mean, it's state rate or whatever. Up until last few months, I guess, I I've never did take a county, pick up all my. But I'll, you you should probably take it, you know, I I'll call, so so I did start. Few seconds ago, but it's just an issue that going over the county line with the, you gotta pick up a mile, uh, we could, you're looking, like I said. Uh, how is it handled with that?
There is just IRS rate, IRS rate or state rate, whatever it is, so you'd be like two miles a day. So it's only forty a day, or whatever, you know, I'm.
Was that worse, do I can?
All I know is that if this board stays consistent with everybody, it's it's.
We should.
And it's easier to, it's an easy argument, if we're consistent, if it's a dollar forty, or if it's.
Fourteen dollars.
So I'm just throwing, I'm not trying to pick on you or nothing. I didn't know that we had that.
I didn't either.
Thank Roger, yeah, because I think Roger, the last time I talked to him. Has has that going on.
How does he get the money? Is it a deduction from payroll?
That I know of, okay.
Think that'd be important to know, because, you know, we wouldn't want to have him bring in a dollar forty and put it on Terry's desk every. I think deduction for pay, but maybe we should firm that up a little bit.
Well, what, let's look, talk to Roger about specifically.
Just a small adjustment.
Yeah, I think on the basis of payments, we need to be consistent as board, if we do it for other people, we need to do it for.
That's exactly what it is.
Oh, I was looking at specifics.
Does that need to be in this uh contract, or is that just a?
I don't think it needs to be.
Bear couldn't move, I doubt that he will move, but.
Matches what we do. This is a three-year contract?
It's a two years, the first two years, uh, I'd say starting off.
Section two.
About the first page.
Right, so approximately, uh, at the end of the two-year period, you said, uh, hundred forty-one. That that's taken that into consideration with the the ten thousand won achieved. Everything goes as I would anticipated to go, you know, with the first sure and uh, given that it is over the next two years. Every six months over the next two years, uh, we'll put it somewhere around the hundred forty, but it's a, and that's fine, of course, uh, on form, it's uh.
Basically, we said it there, Paul advised us, he said, you do a six-month performance review to make sure that everything's getting done, done timely. Two percent would be added on after that, and if not, stay at your base level.
It does say, you know. Based on that, so that's great.
And at the end of the two years, and uh, on that weekend for, for three years, uh, we just have to. Possibly, uh, that, uh, on the market, it's very fun. But otherwise, the language in the contract uh mirrors Paul's uh to G as far as duties and responsibilities of the engineer. It was a a section there in regard to bonding, by that is a Paul, it's something he said he had never done. It's in there, but he never, uh, anything of the rise to bonding. That's something why I'd be able to do, I just. Do that on your own, Ben, I don't know.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't either, I guess I'm not, since he's. Employed, employed as the county engineer, certainly anything that he would do would fall, that would be. Right, would fall back on the county. As far as our responsibility, so I guess I, I I can see why Paul never did it, right? As a personal note, if you feel like you had bought, just in case, I mean, that's up to you, but I don't know why you'd be, right? Your employment does.
Sounding more than Ben, they could be there on his own, right? It's just up to you, but not in our contract.
That's what I can explore, uh, uh, by something feels necessary.
Right, if you have a contract.
I'm not sure why you, I don't know why, I guess you're gonna ask an insurance guy, but from a personal standpoint, you know, because you're acting. I guess if you maybe if you acted on something that you want, in the role of a county engineer. Maybe Paul, I guess, from a legal standpoint, I guess you could be sued individually. And the county could be sued, so I guess that would be the thing, or I guess you'd be bonded would be to your benefit.
I'd be curious what the other engineers think, like, away like, so, jury baby, or what the thoughts on it, Paul? He said he didn't really. I never saw the D two.
Really, because I mean, you're always acting in the capacity of the county engineer. I guess it's true legally, something could, it always, it always gets for you to say, oh, I've never seen that.
Well, I wouldn't ask the insurance company, because I don't think I guarantee that, thank you.
I just be curious, is it common practice among other engineers? Or not, or maybe they don't say.
Maybe ISAC's group of engineers asked. They'll say, it's like, yeah, that's their point, it's common practice. It might say, it might have been fifty, sixty years ago, but it's not anymore.
And if uh it is something, that's something I'll pursue, uh, you know, very excited.
I have a question about the vacation, it's entitled to twenty-five days paid vacation. Does that mean that that ten is the most you can accrue at any time?
Yes.
Never have more than, there never got even a year, but it sounds to me, is that correct?
So if he has fifteen at the end of the year, he loses five.
Okay, I just wanted to.
And he doesn't get them paid out.
All right, right.
But at the end of the next year, that don't mean he can go to forty-five, if you gotta go back to thirty-five.
We're, it's trying to make sure.
Bank it for retirement, use it for vacation to.
That was exactly what. We're all on the same page, very good. You think we should uh?
It's hard, but.
Well, the bonding.
I did do it five reasons before that, like I said, I put family aside.
Yes, we're all gonna say both in the. Well, go ahead, into. I move that we approve the county engineer contract with Ben Shaver.
Motion? Second, any further discussion? Uh, mayor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Welcome aboard, Ben.
Yep, you'll do good, we looked for her for years to come.
I think you got, I think you guys have got yourself set up pretty damn good team, so just needs a good leader.
We do.
Believe you are.
We do have a good team, and we uh. We'll try and keep it, maintain it, I've owed us all the ways that, so.
If you finish this term or anything, I still really come to this board and.
Trying to see if a station here, you're gonna take.
Yeah, yours is like a tribute to. Everybody sees every day.
Yep.
What's that?
Two jobs you're earned. Yeah, it's no, deciphering, all the.
Paul's even.
I didn't even.
Just figure out that you uh make sure, I mean, not missing, but personal information that would necessarily be coming to him and making sure I get it to.
And we're not in a hurry to self-driving trucks either.
Gonna have to do the same, so, you know, so. You just don't know what's out there too, so. Don't always have your ass to tell you what happens.
We do have a closed session, but before that, I have citizens info, we have nobody. Yeah, let's sign that.
Terry's not here. Can Megan sign for it?
Geez, you're.
I just seen a seventy-five dollar deduction.
Do it twice.
Please read the detail before you report contracts. And raise a letter, for God's sake, you.
Replace concrete, pour milk.
Place.
Didn't know, I think I mean, Portland, that lot of.
Yes, so in in six years, when I'm asking for the second page for mine, I'm not gonna be in the band's contract.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben, good work. Well, I'm officially to the top of the team, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Is there any citizen input on Zoom? Cindy?
Good morning, hey, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Ty mentioned earlier. About the federal um permitting process and the big beautiful bill. Um, we have been assured that it's taken out of the House side as far as the CO2 pipeline. The pay-for-play, the ten million dollar expedited permit, but I think it's still on for other pipelines. However, now it goes to the Senate, and we've heard rumblings around that they're trying, they're desperate to get it back in that bill. So I would encourage everyone, I don't know the contacts that you have, but to, you know, contact Ernst and Grassley. And ask for their help in making sure that it stays out of that bill. Um, also, on the, on the state level, Governor Reynolds still has not signed House File six thirty-nine. So any kind of input, we hear that she is keeping a tally. And of both sides of the issue, and whoever contacts her the most is the route that she's going to go with. I hope that isn't the case, but um, if you would like to have her sign it or veto it, please get ahold of her. Um, I do know that her email is not working, any emails that people are sending to her are becoming, coming back undeliverable. But my email went through to her, uh, chief of staff, who is accepting emails, so we appreciate that. Um, so if you, she hasn't to.
Said Crawford County kids are tough shell.
Yeah, I know, which is a a really good thing, um, she has until the end of the week to sign it, I believe the fourteenth. Is the, is the date that if she doesn't sign it by them, it's a pocket veto, which means, you know, it 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 gets vetoed. So we're hoping that she does sign it, and um, that's all the updates I have for today.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, hearing none, I'll take a motion, move into closed session.
Make a motion, they're going to close session.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. They're in closed session, we will shut Zoom off.